Good afternoon. I call to order the Lynchburg City Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 28, 2018. Thank you all for attending. The first order of business is the approval of two sets of minutes, January 10th and 24th. Are there any additions or corrections to either sets of minutes? We have a motion for the January 10th minutes.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I will abstain, I was absent from that. How about a motion for the January 24th minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain because I wasn't there for that one.
Alright, thank you. As we move into our public hearing item, I want to remind our audience that we do have a set of guidelines that we follow. They are laid out in the agenda. Our goal with these guidelines is not to limit public interaction, but to make sure everyone has an opportunity to express their input, and our goal is to achieve that. If you are presenting at any point, please be aware of your time restrictions. We do have a series of lights. Green means you're good to go, yellow means you should be wrapping it up, and red means you should be done. So our next order of business is the following public hearing item. Petition of Presbyterian Homes and Family Services to rezone approximately 49 and 709, 000 acres located on portions of 4301 Williams Road and 150 Linden Avenue, also known as tax parcels 185-07-001, 068-01-005, and 068-01-800. From R1 Low Density Residential District to IN-1C Institutional District Conditional. The submitted concept plan and narrative indicates the planned construction of two non-lighted turf athletic fields, an American With Disabilities Act accessible pool, two parking areas, associate grading retaining walls, and fencing. Mr. Martin, I assume you are giving us our presentation?
Part of it. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Members of Planning Commission, as stated in Chair Perrott's opening remarks, the petition does propose to rezone approximately 48 acres of the 163 acres owned and maintained by Presbyterian Homes and Family Services from R1 Low Density Residential to IN-1 Institutional, Institutional District 1 Conditional. The submitted concept plan does indicate the proposed construction of two non-lighted turf athletic fields in this area, a ADA accessible swimming pool in this area that would replace existing swimming pool here on the front lawn, as well as two parking areas, one here and here, along with associated grading retaining walls and fencing. City Council adopted the institutional districts ordinance on March 12, 2013, and this was after a two-plus-year period of meetings with institutions throughout the city and other stakeholders, some of which are with us this evening. The purpose of the ordinance was to facilitate the development of the city's institutions without the need of obtaining conditional use permits. The ordinance was based upon common themes that developed during the stakeholder discussions. These themes included the following: Improvements that do not cause offsite impacts should be allowed by right. The ordinance should focus on expansions or incremental growth resulting in offsite impacts. A definition of substantial impact requiring a more in-depth review should be developed. There should be flexibility in the requirements for having master plans. And that there should be an ongoing dialogue between the institutions and the city. The resulting IN-1 district that is being requested by this petition is intended to provide for institutional uses such as colleges, universities, senior living facilities, medical facilities, and churches with multiple buildings contained in a campus setting. The district provides flexibility for institutions while identifying areas intended and needed for future development. IN-1 districts are for institutional campuses located primarily within or adjacent to residential areas. The IN-1 district provides for the flexibility of the institution while providing development procedures and standards to minimize the offsite impacts, such as noise, lighting, traffic, and availability capacity of water and sanitary sewer infrastructure associated with the development of the institution. The area is recommended for institutional uses on the city's future land use map as adopted by council in 2013. Also, the area was recommended for institutional uses in the 2002 Comprehensive Plan and as far back as the 1984 General Plan at the time. So it's been the city's intent to see this area developed for institutional uses since at least back to 1984. As required by the zoning ordinance, the petitioner contracted with Timmins Group to conduct a traffic analysis. The resulting analysis included the intersections of VES Road and Linden Avenue and VES Road and Rivermont Avenue. The analysis included existing traffic volumes on the roads and at those intersections, as well as traffic that would be generated by these expansions, the traffic that was included in the 2016 traffic studies submitted by West Minister Canterbury during their rezoning to IN-1, and grew that traffic by 1% annual growth rate. After looking at all of that, the resulting analysis concluded that all the intersections would continue to function at a level of service A or B, with the exception of the southbound movement at Rivermont Avenue and VES Road, which currently functions at a level of service E. Even after the development, that intersection and movement would still function at a level of service E. So the way the institutional district works is because traffic is a significant offsite impact, anytime that the institution would submit a plan, a site plan, that would cause that level of service to degrade, they would be required to improve that intersection or they would not be able to expand. So that was the way the ordinance was designed. The traffic analysis that was submitted indicated with what's proposed before you today, the intersections still function as they do now, and that it would take an additional 175 southbound trips in the PM peak before that level of service would degrade. The city's transportation engineer has reviewed that analysis and concurs with conclusions made in it. The campus of the Presbyterian Homes and Family Services was established in 1903, and the petitioner has met or exceeded the development standards contained in the zoning ordinance. The area has been and continues to be recommended for institutional uses on the city's future land use map as contained in the Comprehensive Plan. The area proposed for rezoning is only a portion of the entire campus of the Presbyterian Homes and Family Services property, leaving approximately 116 acres in its current zoning and state surrounding this area that's not proposed for any development. The petitioner has voluntarily proffered not to light the athletic fields and maintain 100-foot setback in lieu of the required 50 feet, along with a vegetative evergreen buffer that was planted in 2016 by the petitioner, and with those sayings, this should result in little to no negative offsite impact from the proposal before you this evening. And with that, the Planning Division recommends approval of the rezoning with the voluntarily submitted proffers, and will be happy to answer any questions throughout the process this evening.
Thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? If you could come forward, state your names and sign in, and feel free to add anything to Mr. Martin's presentation.
Mr. Perrott? I'm John Francisco, Representative of Presbyterian Homes. With me is Bob Dendi, who's the President and CEO of Presbyterian Homes. He's going to speak first for a few minutes, and then I'm going to finish up, but my understanding is we have a maximum of 10 minutes.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you for hearing our proposal this afternoon. For those of you I haven't met, I'm Bob Dendi, and it's been my pleasure to serve as the President of Presbyterian Homes and Family Services for the past 15 years. Our leadership team and Board of Directors are fortunate to be the stewards of one of the most beautiful green spaces in the city of Lynchburg. We don't take that responsibility lightly. In addition to the responsibility to be good stewards of our resources, we have a strong history of doing what is good and helpful in the neighborhood. We only want what is best for our neighborhood and our neighbors, and believe our plans are consistent with that belief. It's fun to recall that the neighborhood grew up around Presbyterian Homes and the Virginia Episcopal School. An impressive public-private partnership with the city of Lynchburg recruited humankind to our community in the early 1900s. We're grateful to Lynchburg for a century of collaboration. Our campus has always provided a sanctuary, some recreation, worship, education, and fun for children and families. The fields, cross-country courses, tennis courts, cottages, gym, pool, gardens, chapel, and pond have been an integral part of our neighborhood and part of the wider community. Today, humankind employs about 135 people and serves thousands each year, helping make Lynchburg a great place to live, work, and play, for everyone, not just some. In addition to those we serve, more than 10,000 people visit our campus each year and enjoy our facilities. We provide more than $5 million in charitable care each year locally in areas that are very similar to the same services we provided when children lived in residence. They came with mental health concerns, some with developmental disabilities, early childhood development, homelessness, workforce development, and transportation. Our campus is beautiful, vibrant, and bustling with services and collaborative partners. We host a collaborative partner school for children with autism and a day support program for young adults with autism. Our Little Wings Preschool and After School Program serve children with diverse learning styles on a sliding scale. We provide space and support for collaborative community gardens that donated more than 1,000 pounds of vegetables in 2017 alone to address some of our food deserts. We host a dozen collaborative summer camps, providing a safe and fun place for children to swim and to play outside, and children need more time to play outside with the number of devices that are available to them today. Our cross-country course is noted as the best in the region, serving as the home course for middle schools, high schools, and our homeschoolers. The commitment to mind, body, and spirit have been a part of our mission from our earliest days, and play has always been an important part of our mission and a part of our campus since it was laid out by Charles Gillette in 1923. The plans to replace our pool, to formalize two fields, to formalize parking are intended to meet some, and certainly not all, of the needs for places for children to play. Two fields are all that we have planned, and we intentionally carved out this 49 acres to limit our opportunities, being respectful of and responsive to our neighbors. Our historical and current campus activities fit in the IN-1 designation. As an institution serving children and families, we've been a good and generous neighbor. We have been faithful to the intended use of our land. We have listened carefully and prayerfully and come today with reasonable plans consistent with our mission and consistent with the city's expectations for our neighborhood. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Again, I'm John Francisco from the Law Firm of Woods Rogers Edmonds &amp; Williams. I'm here to speak just very briefly on behalf of Presbyterian Homes, and what I want to focus on is the reasonableness of what we're trying to do, and it's the reasonableness of reclassifying a 47-acre portion of our 166-acre campus for IN-1. So just so everyone in this room is absolutely clear, we are not asking our entire 166-acre campus to be rezoned. We have carefully, as carefully as possible, reviewed our historical institutional uses, and we have analyzed our current uses and our foreseeable future uses as required under the two-year concept plan, and we have identified a -- it's actually, you said 49, the original application was 49.709 acres. The revised application is 47.836 acres within the designated area for inclusion into the IN-1 zoning district that was approved by this Planning Commission in 2013 and City Council in 2013. There's absolutely nothing unreasonable about bringing the historical institutional uses that we've had on this property within the framework of the ordinance. If you read the ordinance, and I know you all have, we fit exactly within it, and the IN-1 ordinance was written by the Planning Department and approved by this commission inherently in contemplation of it being inside or next to residential neighborhoods, just like we have here. So there cannot be an argument that there's something inherently inconsistent between an IN-1 zone district and a residential district, even a residential 1 district, and there cannot be a valid argument that just giving someone an IN-1 inherently damages the property values of the surrounding neighborhood. The ordinance was specifically written with criteria to prevent that from happening. Again, the main stick, we would argue, that is in the IN-1 ordinance is the requirement for a traffic study. If we came back two years from now, 20 years from now, whenever it is, and we try to do something inconsistent with the concept plan, and we seek a building permit to build something in the area that is new, the first requirement we're going to have is we have to go out and do a traffic study, and there has to be a comfort level from the Planning Department that we would not increase traffic to the extent that would cause a negative material adverse impact on the neighboring properties. In addition, on our property, just like every other IN-1 property, there's a 20% green space setback requirement. You can't build on more than 80% of your property. If you look at our narrowly tailored 47-acre area, we have the historical, what we call the horseshoe, buildings that have been there since about 1910. We have two new parking lots. In one of those areas, the bottom area, that's an area we currently use for parking, but we want to formalize that parking area. We have a new parking area. We have the existing barns and the community gardens that are not going anywhere. We're putting down two athletic turf fields and a new handicapped accessible swimming pool. If you all have visited the property, you're aware that the topography of a good section of the remaining property is not conducive to construction. So my point is, is if you take the 20% setback requirement and you take into account what is there, what's going to be there, and you take into account the topography, these thoughts and assertions by the neighbors worrying about future significant additional construction on the property is simply not supported by the facts on the ground. As set forth in the narrative, we have submitted a two-year concept plan. That's all that's required, that's all we've done, but what is in our concept plan is what we intend to do. Neighbors have complained, "Well, what are they going to do in 20 or 30 years?" You know, "Might a different board of this organization do something differently?" I don't know how to respond to that. I can't say what'll happen in 20 or 30 years, but it's unfair to ask us to submit a 30-year concept plan and to make commitments for the next 30 years when that is not in the ordinance, and other neighboring property owner who submitted an application for IN-1 in 2016 was not required to answer those kinds of questions or submit any kind of concept plan more than two years. I know my time is short. Last thing I'll say is we've tried to be a good neighbor. We have been talking to the neighbors about this project for four or five years, and most people in this room know the story of what happened in 2013. A conditional use permit was submitted, and then after complaints by the neighbors, it was retracted, but we have winnowed that project down significantly. We've made over 20 concessions, we've taken out the things that the neighbors complained about, primarily the lights, and from our knowledge, we have eliminated, we feel we've eliminated any material adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood. And my time is soon to be up. Final thing I'll say is we did submit a letter about an hour ago in response to a letter you all received, I guess yesterday afternoon, that we did not know about today, so we have submitted for your review, a letter on short notice. I apologize, we did the best we can to get it to you before the hearing, and obviously additional statements by me are in that letter. Thank you.
Thank you. As we transition over to the public input side of this meeting, I just want to point out that we have received lots of emails and letters from several folks, and we appreciate that. They've all become part of the public record, and they are certainly going to be considered as well as your input here this evening. We're going to invite folks to speak who are in favor of this petition, and if you are representing a group, we would like to invite you to go first, if you would. So groups first and then individuals.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Elliott, and in my professional life, I work with Central Health, but I'm not here on behalf of Central Health. I also represent Humankind as the Board Chair for the last three years. So I'm speaking on behalf of Humankind's Board of Directors, of who I have a few here this evening. If you would raise your hands, we have a few that actually came all the way from Richmond to join us today, so thank you. My comments will be brief, but on behalf of the Board, I want to say thank you for your service and thank you for the opportunity just to speak from a Board perspective as we look towards the future of Humankind and their mission being served out for as long as possible into the future. First, my personal story of why I've worked with Humankind for the last four years. I've been within the community for about five years now, moved from Chesapeake, Virginia, and as you can imagine, lots of opportunity to get involved in this area here. I took about the first year to look around and figure out what matched up with my passions in life around human services, and after about a year, it was obvious to me that I wanted to serve with Humankind. Their mission speaks to me, and it speaks to everything that I try to accomplish in life as well. Mission is to strengthen individuals and families through care, counseling, and education. By strengthening individuals, we strengthen families, and by strengthening families, we strengthen the community. Just to speak briefly about the plans and the project that are before us, on behalf of the Board, I'd like to represent and say, these are the plans. There is no long-term, large plan that outstrips what you see before you. We see two fields and a pool that will allow us to impact the youth in our community in a very impactful way. And last but not least, I'd just share, I'd like to talk to you about a gentleman who impacted me in life, and this is why I'm so passionate about this project. Gentleman's name is Gary Obernauer, he just happened to be my middle school basketball coach. Coming from a home of a single mother, we did not have the transportation and opportunity to get me to and from practice and games very easily. Mr. Obernauer picked me up from every practice, took me home and to games as well, and what he did for a skinny kid who had very little skill and very low self-confidence was pouring to me on the basketball court and outside during those rides as well. And a lot of people see fields and a pool, what I see is the opportunity for the Gary Obernauers of the world to affect the Michael Elliott's of the world in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, hello. Let me introduce myself, my name's Kevin Cam. I work for Virginia Cooperative Extension. I'm the Extension Agent for both 4H Youth Development and Agricultural and Natural Resources and the Unit Coordinator of the office here in Lynchburg. I also manage a group of talented and dedicated volunteers, of 140 volunteers, of Extension Master Gardeners, and we have, just to give you a little background, we reached out to Humankind back in 2014 just to do something to give back to the community, and it was a win from the very beginning, just to give back in so many ways to the community, especially with youth and adults. And we designed the concept of a garden, a garden. There's food issues all across Lynchburg, as you know, there's food deserts all across Lynchburg, food access, food insecurity problems, so we were just going to do that. So back in 2014, the concept of creating the dig site, which is the community gardens you'll see in the, near the barns down here, the Davis Instructional Garden, developed. At that site alone, there's three raised beds, a compost education center, water harvesting system, six demonstration plots with wildfire herb, perennial and vegetable plots, just to educate the community. And we have been working with Humankind and with their Little Wings Healthy Families Groups, the Katie's Place and other staff that are gardeners. The whole purpose of the garden also is to develop it into a bigger and better community garden where people can come to sit and enjoy nature, to grow food, and also to give back to the community. In 2018, it's our intent to open up 14 new plots for people all across the spectrum, whether they're in poverty, whether they're not in poverty, so that they can put those gardens in, and Humankind has allowed us to be a part of this vision, knowing from day one of the whole intent of trying to have families come there with some athletic fields was a win for us, and I want to highlight that. Extension is all about providing research-based information. We don't go to Pinterest and get information and say it's, "Hey, we need to do this, it's online, we need to do this." We research it through feasibility studies, strategic plans, and we provide this information. Doing some of this research for today, I just wanted to point out some aspects of the benefits of gardening and athletic sports, which this is going to provide, and all of these link in very, very well. Number one, positive social and interpersonal skill development, healthy living, special belonging, developing confidence and self-esteem, reduction in stress and depression, leadership and character-building skills, life skill development, drug and alcohol abuse prevention. Just the marriage, the benefits of sporting events such as soccer, baseball, swimming, et cetera, and then gardening, how it links together. It's a total win-win for the community, for Lynchburg, and it fits their mission and it fits our mission of just being a collaborative cooperative person in the community to give back. We want to strengthen people's lives, and this is how we do it. So lastly, just to conclude, the impact of this alone is going to impact so many Lynchburg families and youth. For kids playing in the athletic fields, their families are going to be able to go to the gardens and just relax and learn about healthy eating. It's a no-brainer, but I appreciate your willingness to let me speak on behalf of our support for Humankind's in this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others in favor of this petition?
Good evening. I am here in support of Humankind in a dual role, first personal relationship and then a professional.
Could you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrea Reed. Okay, I want to first share my personal relationship. It started back in 1965 at the age of five years old, when Humankind was called the Presbyterian Home. Children between the ages of five and fourteen that lived in the College Hill area attended the Timothy Club, which was a six-week Bible-based summer enrichment program. It is now called Camp Timothy. One of the highlights of the summer was going swimming. That's the highlight of most summer camps for children. This goal was met and accomplished due to the generosity and compassion of the leadership back in the 1960s that ran the Presbyterian Home. The swimming pool was available to the campers at no charge each morning for six weeks during the summer. Now, the professional side is, in 1994, I returned to direct the Camp Timothy. I'm currently serving my twenty-fourth year as a director. We have serviced over two thousand and four hundred children between the ages of five and fourteen. And again, the highlight, one of the highlights remained to go swimming. Humankind is a safe place that we take the children every summer. The staff there and those in charge continue to have compassion on the children. There is no fee for us to attend, to go to the swimming pool. And on occasion, we use the outside courts, the outside fields for recreational activities. We do try to get the children out of the city, because it's, we're in Lynchburg, right in the College Hill area. And when we go, we're not into electronics or anything. We just do old-fashioned recreational fun. Many of the children we serve are underprivileged. They do not have the cost to attend a public pool. We also teach them water safety, and we enjoy, again, the courts, the field, and all the other areas that Humankind make available to us at no charge. So I am in support of their proposal. Thank you.
Others in support?
Hi, I'm Kim Price. I am the managing director of Women and Children Services for Centra Health, and I just wanted to come and tell you about all the great work that we've collaborated with human services over the years. They, I've been in my position for about fifteen years, and they have been very instrumental in helping us with our home visitation program that they have, with the Healthy Families Program that they have, really reaching out and helping us work with our women and children. We struggle after they go home, and they provide that follow-up care that we're not able to provide. They are always flexible, always looking for new opportunities. We collaborate often. We've also used the property on occasion to have great educational programs that educate the community and the providers. They've helped us educate our community about our breastfeeding rates and help keep the rates up with our moms, and provided us with lactation consultants to help moms, as well as we've hosted other events to help educate about the opioid crisis and what's going on there recently. And then I would just like to say, as a parent, I've spent many hours sitting on the cross-country field with my kids. It's a great opportunity for them and a great track. They're absolutely right. And then they also host a great 5K that we do every year, and I think is just a great family event, and so I support that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in favor?
Hi, I'm Charles Tucker. I'm the director of Athletics and Activities at Lincoln Middle School. We've established a great relationship with Humankind over the past fifteen years, as referenced by Mr. Dendi, going along with the cross-country course. All three middle schools, both high schools, homeschoolers, VES, and Randolph College all use that area for their competitions and practices. My job as director of Athletics and Activities is to keep our children engaged in healthy activities after school. Without groups like Humankind, we would have a hard time doing that. They've provided us free use of their course and maintained it for us, which is no small matter. Without groups like them, my job would be very difficult. I'm definitely in support of them enhancing their campus to provide more support for our children.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Others in favor?
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Morris, and I live just a few tenths of a mile away from the Humankind campus. I'm also a former Blue Ridge Lacrosse Board Member and President, and I'm speaking to you today in support of the turf fields at Humankind. Our lacrosse club's main season is in the spring. This year, our club is using the city field at Blackwater Creek and also a small parcel at Lincoln Middle School. Unfortunately, in the past, these fields have been, had very limited availability, so our club has really struggled to find fields for the kids to play on. Blackwater Creek Field wasn't open to us for three full spring seasons prior to my service as president, and so the uncertainty of field availability is really difficult for us to work with. Let me just review our club's schedule with you for a moment. Our lacrosse games are scheduled in our South West Virginia League from late March to mid-May. The city fields open March fifteenth, which gives the teams only about two or three practices to learn how to play the game of lacrosse before the games begin. Our coaches, super enthusiastic, are always anxious to get on the fields in February, but we really don't have any place to go before they open in March, March fifteenth. So if we had turf fields, that would really be exciting for us to be able to play year round. They would be definitely on them very frequently. Rainfall in the spring season also causes many missed practices and games. Rescheduling these is very difficult due to the limited space. As moving events to the next sunny day certainly interferes with the other team's schedules. Our Lincoln coaches sometimes get creative and take the kids onto the fenced-in basketball courts, but obviously, this is not ideal. We're very grateful to be partners with Lynchburg City Parks and Rec, who allows us to use the city fields. But as a partner, we are prioritized third for field access behind Parks and Rec and any city school sporting events. As the club president, I would have loved to be able to tell parents that their children would be guaranteed all practice and games. They would never be canceled. But unfortunately, some years, we had to miss certainly four or five days of games and practices. Aside from Blue Ridge, I work alongside EC Glass Lacrosse players, who won a grant from U.S. Lacrosse for a developmental lacrosse program called Soft Sticks. This is soft sticks and balls that require you not to have any padded-up helmets equipment. These students partner with the Boys and Girls Club downtown to teach the sport of lacrosse to those who might not otherwise be able to put a stick in their hand. These fields at Humankind would provide a great outdoor space for us to teach after school, as we currently play indoors in a small gym. I mentioned earlier, I'm also a neighbor at Humankind and live just very close to the property. I'm excited that Humankind has opened their arms to those that want to enjoy the beauty of the woods, the lake, the fields, the gardens, and hopefully soon, these sports fields. I thank Humankind for the seven straight years of cross-country meets they hosted for my own children. I really believe that people should be outdoors, enjoy nature, and I'm very happy to have this park-like setting in my own backyard. With no other parks close by, I really appreciate Humankind's gracious attitude of offering their private land for these public development opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in favor?
My name is Tom Shahady. I'm an environmental science professor at Lynchburg College, and I certainly support this proposal. On a personal note, I've been coaching football and hockey and other sports in Lynchburg quite a long time, and over at VES, and can really get strongly behind the idea of athletic fields and other facilities that young people can have. I also work a lot with students of Lynchburg College. They need support in places like this to develop and spend time on teams and develop character. It does a tremendous amount for them. And I know the student athletes I've worked with over time, and we've seen the power of that. So anything like this, I strongly support. Also, what was mentioned about the community gardens from an environmental perspective, I think is very, very important. So I can strongly support that. Also, I don't know the arrangement they have with EC Glass Band, but I've spent about three summers cooking hamburgers on their property. They allow the band, and I'm part of the band boosters, to fundraise, and we raise a lot of money when we do this event out there, and they've been very kind to let people out there, and it supports the, a lot of kids at band and EC Glass that would otherwise not have the ability to participate in band. So I can vouch for that as well. And really, one more. Tom, can I ask you to go to the flume on that map? There. One thing I would point out on this proposal, if I can, it says right in findings of fact on the conservation plan that resource conservation areas include river streams, wetlands, floodplains, and adjacent steep slopes. These are areas serve a wide range of important functions, wildlife habitat, natural storm-water control, active and passive recreation, and are counted among the city's primary assets. It further says the conservation of these environmentally sensitive areas is one of the primary goals of the plan. So that clearly states, and it's in this petition, that is a primary goal of the plan, a comprehensive plan that we have for the city. And I would just point out that as they go through an institutional rezon request, you can see a large part of that, at the bottom, not a large part of the whole request, but there is a good section of resource conservation. And I would strongly ask that be considered in this petition, that if you're going to rezone off the future land use map for institutional, let's go with the whole map, and also ask that the resource conservation areas are rezoned as well. Certainly, as you can appreciate, and you've seen a lot of petitions come before you, that resource conservation is something that is oftenly reduced in petitions that come before you guys in the city council, and rarely ever do we see these petitions included. So I would strongly ask that if that can be considered in this petition, that it would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in favor of the petition?
My name is Jane White. I'm only speaking as an individual, not as a representative of a group. I hope that's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I am a recent resident of Westminster Canterbury and live in a cottage, which is only a few feet. I'm not quite sure how close the property line is, but it's up a slope. And I will have to say that I am so excited at the thought of happy voices playing sports. I love it. I've been to lots and lots of athletic events, got halfway there and found they were canceled because of the wet field or whatever. But I think it's a wonderful use of their property, and I'm very proud to be endorsing it and living at the bottom of the hill, close to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in favor?
Good afternoon. I'm Richard Green. I live at, excuse me, 4410 Williams Road, adjacent to the Presbyterian Home and Family Services. We moved to that particular neighborhood fairly recently, but I have found that since moving there, I've come to realize what an asset the Presbyterian Home and the grounds there provide for me personally, and for my family, and for the neighborhood in general. Any enhancement of that property makes it a better asset to me and to my property. The other thing I would like to say is that I've raised three children in the area, and there is a real dearth of athletic fields in that whole area of town. While I was sitting here, I was trying to think, where is the closest, if this is not done, where's the closest field that would be that size? And it would probably be Lincoln Middle School. In raising those three children, they played soccer, football, and we had to cart them, in some cases, out of the city in order for them to play and practice. To be able to walk over to a place as nice as the Presbyterian Home to watch them play would have been great. But these are, these athletic fields are very much needed for the community and that neighborhood in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in favor? All right, we are going to invite members of the public who are against this petition, and we would like to invite folks representing groups to come up first, if you would, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Sean Hewitt. I'm the president and CEO of Westminster Canterbury. We have had a number of conversations with Humankind, have tried over the years. We've shared concerns of lights, traffic, safety, noise. I understand there is some opportunity here to minimize that or remove some of that. That's headway, and that's better than where we've come from. I really start with a business perspective of a fairly large organization, concerned that a large project done the wrong way can affect our financial model. While some people even that may live at Westminster Canterbury may speak in support and want to have this, we are supportive of kids, but at the same time, looking at if we have problems with our financial model, that affects potentially resident fees. Fees go up, it becomes less affordable for people, and that's a concern. We have concerns whether we can market our cottages, and I can't sit here and tell you that having ball fields behind us, depending on how close, can affect us. I wouldn't know until five or ten years down the road, and by that point, it's too late. So we obviously have concerns with how do we market, how do we stay viable? Last time, we had a proposal for two fields and shared with us. By the time those plans came down to this committee, they actually had phase two, phase three, that ended up being five fields. So there's a concern of trust, of what does this look like using an IN-1? How does this grow? We started out meeting with us, saying there's going to be two fields, two parking areas, and from what we understand, between conversations between the attorneys, is that now there's an additional parking lot, and wanting IN-1 to possibly do more later. We have the easement, which we granted up Linden Road off of VES Road, was for their mission of an orphanage. It's not a public throughway. And we're concerned what happens if this IN-1, if it stops at what it is presented today, that may be okay. We still think there needs to be some safety precautions, whether it's stop signs, speed bumps, whatever, needs to be done. But if this goes into an IN-1 and this space around the horseshoe has extra fields placed into there, which could be done, the concern there is who's here to protect our residents? When you look at that area coming through off of VES Road, you're going to have kids running over from EC Glass, mine would be one of them, flying around the corner, heading up, going to practice, hopefully not texting. You have 80 to 85-year-old residents pulling out of their cars and that's a big concern for us. How do you stop that? A little stop sign doesn't always stop people from barreling through intersections. So we have to be very, very concerned for our residents coming through there. We oppose the IN-1. We're open to discussion on a conditional use permit with no lights, no lighted scoreboards, no public address system, traffic provisions to provide safety to our residents and the people who come through Linden Avenue. And also the buffer, when you read about how this tree buffer is there, it's a line of evergreens. It's not a natural buffer, it's a line of trees. So we've been trying, we've planted 115 trees on the hill up to our property line over the last two years. We're probably planning on continuing to do that, not knowing what will happen in the future, but would like to see that as well. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Other folks opposed to the petition?
My name is Randy Davis. I'm a resident in one of the cottages at Westminster Canterbury. Somewhat following up on what Sean said, I guess, I assume there's somewhat of a consensus by the administration at Westminster Canterbury that failing a CUP would be better, limiting Humankind to what the current plan is. My thoughts are that failing that, if it continues with the current rezoning plan, my question is, they came and presented a very nice presentation to us in January and have, in their petition, they're proposing what's up here, the two fields and the swimming pool. And they've, at these presentations, they've said, well, this is all we plan to do now and they reduced it, as they've said, from the previous, much larger plan. They said they will not put up any lights and they also said there would be no stands, no sound system, no scoreboards, and so forth. But the only proffers that there are, as far as I can see, are no lights and no structures within the 100, I think it's a 100-foot buffer zone. So the question is, if it continues with the rezoning rather than the CUP, why would they not put in additional proffers for the no stands and no bleachers and no scoreboards and no sound system? And also, as a proffer, that there would be nothing additionally done other than what is currently proposed, the two fields and the three parking areas with no more than 200 spaces. Another question that I have is, I think it was on Friday, on the E-Trackit utility on the Planning Commission's website, there suddenly appeared an additional application number, number 1802-002. This one, I think, is 1801-001, but there's nothing there, no additional documentation or anything, but I would like to know what that is. So that's all I've got and thank you all for your time.
Great, thank you. We will ask about that. Others opposed?
My name is Bob Day. I live at 3856 Peakland. And I'd like to ask one question for you to think about. Why IN-1? This new code provides significant benefits eliminating steps in the review process. When a complex project is proposed and has been used once, Westminster Canterbury had a new building project, it had the funding lined up, it reduced and resized the project based on neighbor input, and IN-1 zoning is now allowing a faster completion schedule. Humankind's proposal is just a concept that is intended to grow in scope. It is not a complex project and it does not have funding lined up. It is a build-it-as-the-money-comes-in type of idea. It's a classic example of what should be managed as a conditional use permit. When presented to the neighbors, Humankind's proposal contained these caveats: no stadium seating, no lights, no PA system, and parking spaces for 200 cars. These were the neighbor heartburns from the previous plan. Humankind told us they listened and the heartburns were gone. At this point, let me say that if proposed as a conditional use with four proffers, no stadium lights, no light, no PA system, 200 space parking, it sails through the conditional use permit process with little to no opposition. Humankind has proffered no lights. You need to ask them about the other three. Humankind did a traffic study, which yielded little insight. So I will summarize for you. VES Road is windy and hilly. Neighbors turning onto VES from driveways or side streets do it quickly because they drive fast on VES. A neighbor who lives on a curve has had five cars crash through her front fence. At the intersection at Boonsboro, it's exciting because drivers race up that hill to make the light. That intersection on the traffic study is rated as an E on a scale of A to F. Back to my primary concern, Humankind does not need a zoning change to complete this proposal. They only want it to avoid the public review process. A zoning change gives wide latitude in what can be done with the land. An IN-1 zoning change eliminates public comment and your review for five years. A zoning change is permanent. It cannot be taken away. The hill at Humankind is a neighborhood treasure. We know that someday it will be developed, but we want you, representing us, to be involved in the discussion of how that land should evolve. As neighbors, we want to talk to you about what should happen to that land. If we can't, then we have lost some of our representative government. I urge you to be stingy in granting IN-1 zoning to anybody, very, very stingy. Few projects need the streamlining that it provides. Most can be accomplished with a conditional use permit and that should be the course of action in this case. You should deny the request.
Thank you. Others opposed?
And so the other commissioners know, I have been allowing some latitude with the timing. I think it's important we let everyone speak their minds and express their opinions, so as long as everyone's okay with that. We want to adhere to the guidelines as much as possible, but we've been allowing both sides to slop over a little bit. We don't want you to feel like you've not been heard.
Thank you. Hello, my name is John Bruce. I live on VES Road. I am here to voice my opposition to Humankind's application for zoning change to IN-1. My opposition is centered on the zoning request, not so much on the specific plan. The IN-1 designation is a new concept for Lynchburg and it seems logical that it should be applied to entities that have had a consistent mission and have a long-term tenure. Unfortunately, Humankind has had to change its activities over the years due to funding changes and government programs. For years, their revenue from grants and contributions has been well short of expenses. I began following their financials in 2013 when they decided to build a large sports complex and through that analysis, I questioned their long-term viability in their current form. Examination of Humankind required 990 IRS filings show a worrisome pattern, large drawdowns from their endowment fund. Filings are available for 2016 and previous years. Since 2008, a period when asset values generally doubled for market returns, Humankind's endowment has dropped from 61.6 million to 29.6 million. Why cut it in half? Excess spending from the endowment is the reason. Most well-run organizations will spend only 3% to 5% of their endowment value each year to supplement programs, 3% to 5%. That way, the endowment can last almost in perpetuity to support both current and future generations. That will not happen with Humankind. Humankind has averaged spending 13.7% of their endowment value per year since 2008. On a cumulative basis, that's $51.6 million have been pulled out of the endowment, $5 million per year on average. That's just plugging the difference between their revenues from contributions and grants and their expenditures. That is not a prudent use of the money that was given years ago to support an orphanage. Irresponsible is a better term. The 2016 endowment value of 29.6 million still seems like a lot of money, it is most of us, but consider this, based on their normal contribution levels and withdrawal rates, this endowment is on its last legs. Reasonable projections give it about 10 years. In their discussion with Westminster Canterbury, they talked about possibly spending so-called reserves to build the sports complex. That's just more endowment spending. They also said they would reserve money each year for replacement of the synthetic turf in future years as that turf wears out. How can you reserve for the future when you run current multi-year, multimillion-dollar deficits? There's no reserve money to set aside. So what will happen on the hill when the endowment can no longer support their activities? Under IN-1, a lot could happen by right and possibly not what the city or the neighbors envisioned. Please deny this IN-1 request. Thank you.
Others opposed?
I live at Westminster Canterbury at 122 Westminster Way. My living room window is 90 feet from their property line. In the 1990s, I was the public affairs director at the old Walter Reed Army Medical Center Walter Reed had sports fields for its troops at the annex in suburban Maryland, adjacent to a residential area. Sometime in the 90s, somebody in the recreation department installed amplification. And after that, every Monday, my community relations officer knew exactly that she was going to spend at least the first day and a half dealing with community complaints. In spite of all of that, I think I could live reasonably comfortably with the plan as it was proposed to us at Westminster Canterbury in January. That is to say, with the written legally binding constraints on amplification, parking, future development, that sort of thing. That seems to have vanished since that time. I have no great objection to the initial plan, as I said. What I do object to is the IN-1 zoning. Presbyterian Home has a long storied reputation in Lynchburg, but Humankind is not the Presbyterian Home. It's a relatively new organization, they face, they're a statewide entity, they are in the process evidently of reinventing themselves. And I think some of that process of reinvention has created some of the problems that we've seen in the way that they've presented their plans for development over the past few years. My idea is, don't give them IN-1 zoning, at least not at the present. Give Humankind an opportunity to develop a local reputation as an institution that is as clear as that of perhaps Westminster Canterbury or Centra or Lynchburg College. It will take a while, but if they're a viable organization, they'll have it. I just ask that you do what is necessary to assure that there are no unanticipated and unfortunate consequences for the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Others opposed?
I'm a recent resident. My wife and I just purchased a house. My wife and I just purchased a house on 140 Linden Avenue. If you look at the bottom, we're one of the two houses right there at the bottom. From everything, like I said, I've, I've only been a resident since September, but I have spoken to some neighbors and just listening to the others speaking here tonight. From what I can tell, it seems like they've al, that Humankind's kind of already shown their hand as what they want to do. They've come with larger plans and scaled it back and been kind of like, what do you think of this? What, you know, how does this fly with everybody? And just kind of feeling things out, and now, instead of doing the conditional use, they're doing, trying to get, do the rezoning to IN-1. And I'm not, I'm not crazy about the, the plan with a conditional use, but I could live with it, much more so than the IN-1, for all the reasons that have already been acknowledged here tonight. One of the things that I want to bring up that no one has talked about, the traffic assessment that was done only concentrated on VES Road. There was absolutely nothing about Linden Avenue. And for those that don't know, Linden Avenue with street parking basically turns into a one-way street, and at least one way as far as one car can go at a time. And my concern is, and also, I, I don't know if I'm speaking out of school here, but I've, the rumor mill supposedly with the athletic fields is that they want to bring in tournaments from all over the state, and that's going to bring all kinds of traffic, and Linden Avenue is just not going to handle that, not by any means. The other concerns that I personally have, all the reasons that I bought the property that it, that we brought the property, we did, right now, we currently have very little sound pollution, very little light pollution, and going back to IN-1 versus the conditional use, if they do the IN-1 versus, and, and I mean, I, I don't exactly know the specifics of it, but the way that I see it is if they do get, eventually get the parking lot, which will primarily be almost in my backyard, eventually, I, I think they're going to come back, and I think they're going to be like, okay, well, we need lighting for safety purposes and whatnot, and then the next thing you know, I've got everything, my whole backyard lit up. Like I said, I'm, I understand their plan, and from those speaking on, on their behalf, you know, if I, in a vacuum, I, I can understand, but I'm, I don't live in a vacuum. We don't live in a vacuum. I live right next door, and it's going to affect me greatly. It's going to affect everyone that lives on Linden Avenue to a great deal. And thank you.
Thank you. Others opposed.
Good afternoon, ladies, gentlemen. My name is Jim Harris. I live at 4412 Gladwood Place. My, the rear of my eight and a half acres borders this property. I have lived there since 1980, longest living probably around that whole property. I'm here to address two things. One, as Sean from Westminster Canterbury so aptly put, "The trust factor." I have read this memo that was sent to people February the 8th, and it so simply states, "We have engaged in meetings with neighbors and a meeting with Westminster Canterbury." I have lived there for 30 years. I have not been out of town in six months. I walked in this place today, and I was told this over the weekend, that Mr. Denny, the president, said he had spoke to me. I walked in this building today, it's the first time I ever laid eyes on him. I have never been addressed there. I'm going to give you some history of the Harrises and the Presbyterian Home. I lived there since 1980, as I stated. During the 1980s, I coached Little League football at Paul Monroe School. I would go to the home, pick the kids up, take them to football practice, take them back home. I went over, they had hay then. I baled hay. They had cattle. I had cattle on my tennis court, in my yard. I had them as pets, but I never complained. But that was for kids at the Presbyterian Home. The mission of this organization is changed, as the gentleman stated, it has evolved over the years. One, IN-1 is not the correct way. I do not believe, and I've stayed involved, I've been in the YMCA heavily for 50 years in this community, and I'm a child supporter 100%, never would do anything against children. But this project is not about kids, it's about revenue. They want to build something to bring people in. I have watched cross-country meets there, and I have had kids struggling right on up in my yard. I am against the project. I hope you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Others against.
My name is Casey Barker. I appreciate you all's time. I'm really not a public speaker. I just want to say that to Mr. Denny, the Presbyterian Home has been a great neighbor. I've lived there since 92, so I've lived there for about a quarter of their existence. I'm not so sure Humankind will be a good neighbor. The reason I say that is because the last proposal that they had was about 17 acres. Now it's close to 50 acres. And yes, there were the lights and the seating and the PA system, and I don't think anybody wanted that. To Mr. Francisco's comments about Westminster having some property, and I guess this IN-1, and they develop cottages, I'm, I'm pretty certain that the people that live there are good neighbors, kind of quiet, not too rambunctious. I think that this, I think that this proposal is a start. It's a, they want to get the, their foot in the door, and then they want to expand. The other thing about Mr. Francisco said is, it's unfair to project 30 years into the future about what the rest of the property is going to be used for. I'm not going to be around in 30 years, I'm pretty much sure of that. And just looking on this map up here, I kind of feel like a David against a Goliath, because they say for now, we're not going to put lights up. And as my other, my next-door neighbor here said, I don't see anything about the entrance to this facility. Is it going to be off VES Road? Is it going to be off Linden Avenue? Is it going to be off Williams Road? I, I don't know. I'm just in opposition to what may happen two years, or five years, or 10 years from now with all of this property. And where I live, between our neighbors' houses, I don't know about the, I guess it's the topography, that when I see people walking up towards the Humankind property, they cross the bridge and going up the hill, you can hear their conversations. I mean, you might not be able to hear every word that they're talking about, and then when there have been events up there, which I'm not opposed to, cross-country, Boy Scouts out there in the middle of the winter freezing, you know, the circus where the elephant ran down the road and went into the woods across the street from my house, I can live with that. I can't live with a business like this, which I think it's going to be in my backyard. I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Peralton, Vice Chairman Light, and members of this commission. I'm Herschel Keller. I'm attorney, and I represent Westminster Canterbury of Lynchburg. I've got to apologize first. In my letter to you of February 27th yesterday, I referred to certain of the petitioners' positions as incontinent as opposed to inconsistent, and I think that's an occupational hazard of representing a, a retirement community. You know, I don't think anybody is questioning the good work that the, that the Presbyterian Home has done over the years and that Humankind will continue to do. Myself, I helped build the sun shelters by the, by the playground behind the, behind the horseshoe. They've certainly done good things over the years, and many of the people in the audience today spoke to that. The question really is one of land use planning. Is this an appropriate use of the property? Not is Humankind a good organization, not is it whether they do good things, but is this, is this a good use of the property? And I'm going to speak particularly to the easement. The property is accessed by two means. One is down Linden Avenue, where these two gentlemen just spoke. They live right there in the corner. And the other is over a private easement that is owned by Westminster Canterbury that was restricted to the historical purposes of the orphanage, and those were the purposes that were in use at the time that that easement was recorded, which since the orphanage is no more, have since expired. I'm sure that Mr. Francisco, who's a very competent counsel, will take, take issue with this and argue that the, the Presbyterian Home has the right to use that, will disagree about that. But at a minimum, that easement is in question. There is uncertainty about whether that easement can be closed by Westminster Canterbury or not, and I'm here to tell you, we can close it. If this, if this, if this project goes forward, Westminster Canterbury can close that easement. They can, parkabodos are there, they can put concrete ballards up, you know, they can stop the easement, and then what happens? IN-1 zoning is for all, you know, relevant purposes, permanent. It won't be limited to just this project, and all of that traffic will come down Linden Avenue. And I think all of you have probably been down Linden Avenue, and it, it just cannot handle that traffic. So I won't repeat the points that were made earlier, but from a land use perspective, a land use planning perspective, it is certainly appropriate to consider access, and if, if the, if the easement access is uncertain, and that access might go away, you're making a decision potentially to force all of the traffic for this project, and whatever they do in the future for IN-1 onto Linden Avenue, which is a, a sloped, curvy, high-end residential street, it's not an appropriate access. This is a neat project. This is a really great project, just not for this particular property. Before I quit, is, is there anybody in the audience that, that has not spoken that is opposed to it? Would you stand?
Anybody?
Yes, anybody. Thank you.
Others opposed who wish to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this point, I would like to offer the petitioners a chance to present a rebuttal to any points made.
How many hours do I get?
A few minutes.
I respect everyone who came up here and spoke, both in support and in opposition to this project. I certainly respect everyone who lives near this project. Again, we don't have the big picture up there. People who live closest to this project obviously are the cottage residents at Westminster Canterbury. They, they are directly impacted, and they, they ought to, they ought to have the most concerns. We have done our best to accommodate those concerns by agreeing forever not to put up lights on this property. It's not something we can just agree to and then a year from now put up. It's a condition of the IN-1 zoning permit that we will not put lights up. If we want to put lights up in the future, we have to come back and reapply. With regard to Westminster Canterbury, we have no intention of affecting their financial model. We have no intention of hurting their ability to market these cottages, but we are not doing anything or planning to do anything that would damage their cottages. Not a single person from Westminster Canterbury came up here, or a neighbor came up here, and said that anything we're planning to do has an objective, adverse, negative impact on their property value. There's some comments by Mr. Day about VES Road being windy, and kids speeding down the road, and the light at Boonsborough Road being difficult. That's not our fault, and that's not our issue. It's not our intention to make VES Road any worse than it is. The traffic study is appropriate, and it shows the limited traffic. The last thing I want to talk about, and the thing I take most seriously, is the threat by Mr. Keller, I call it a threat, the statement by Mr. Keller that if we get IN-1 zoning, they're going to shut down our access to VES Road. As set forth in detail in my letter that I submitted this afternoon, that's just a completely legally invalid argument. And I, seriously, I could sit up here for three hours and debate that argument. It's way more than a disagreement. There is no question about the validity of our access easement. If y'all have questions about that, I'd be happy to make the legal argument here, but we're not supposed to try the easement case in here. This isn't, this isn't the Lynchburg Circuit Court, and if, if they want to file a lawsuit, we'll vigorously defend ourselves on that. We have an easement not for purposes of access to an orphanage. That's not what the easement says. The easement says we have access as long as we continue our, to use our property forever in consistent with the charitable purposes of Presbyterian Homes and, and Family Services, Inc. It's not limited to the purposes that existed in 1995. It's not limited to school buses going in and out of an orphanage. To argue that that is the easement is simply invalid. We have full access. We're not going to bring people down Linden Avenue. We're going to use VES Road. I know I'm getting close to being over. The last thing I want to say is, we have reached out to people in the neighborhood. We did knock, knock, we did not go knocking on door-to-door to meet every single one of the neighbors. We put out flyers, we had community meetings, we met with Westminster Canterbury. I've been engaged in phone conversations with Mr. Keller for at least five or six weeks, in which I proactively asked him to give me statements on behalf of Westminster Canterbury voicing their objections to this project, in the hope that when we got those objections in, we could decide whether we wanted to proffer certain things. We did not get any letter from Westminster Canterbury. We never, until today, heard objections from Westminster Canterbury in order to consider making proffers. We made the proffers we thought we had to make. The point being, we're not trying to change anything in our initial presentation to Westminster Canterbury. We're still committed to not building score, to not installing scoreboards, bleachers, air horns. We have no intention of throwing lacrosse balls at the cottages at Westminster Canterbury and all the other things that Mr. Keller stated in his letter. If those were presented to us in a timely fashion before this hearing, instead of us finding out about them four hours ago, we could have tried to accommodate for those things. That being said, we're, we're, we have tried to be reasonable over the last four years. We're continuing to be reasonable. Over the last four years, we're continuing to be reasonable, and we're, have been a good neighbor out here since 1903. Be happy to answer any questions any of you have.
Thank you, sir. And then finally, is there anyone who represents the opposition who would like to offer a final few comments? Mr. Hewitt? Oh, sorry, Mr. Keller.
I just want to clarify one point. Responding to Mr. Francisco's last comments, I called John last Monday, we had a conversation about whether that Westminster Canterbury and the neighbors would either withdraw or oppose, withdraw opposition, or support their application for this particular project under CUP. And that was Monday morning, he responded, he was not happy with that offer. He said he had a board meeting that day, and was going to get back to me at the board meeting, so it's a week ago Monday, and I've not had a returned phone call. We have really tried to engage them very seriously in a conversation about the project, about proffers, about going forward to the CUP, and this place to the trust issue. And not only for this particular application, but what is the intent of this project going forward? Do they just intend to build what they're showing us? Or when they get IN-1, will they build something much more? Thank you.
I'll just follow up. For some reason, we agreed to have our lawyers talk to each other rather than the organizations. And I get passionate about this. I plan to be here a long time, I hope I am. I don't understand why we had to get lawyers, and then when we do, say, eight days ago, we want a CUP. We're not sitting here saying no to this completely. We're trying to find a middle-of-the-road way to make this work for them, to carry out their mission, for us to protect our mission and keep doing what we're doing. We're in a pretty good business at Westminster Canterbury, as far as demographics, most people realize that. We don't want to mess that up. Why attorneys, you know, what happened in the breakdown, I apologize that we're here arguing about this, because I would expect in conversation, there would have been a no, we don't want to do CUP, but we want to come back with these proffers, and say, hey, no to the bleachers, lights, PA systems, two parking spaces. I wish we could have done that. I still say, I can't support this, I'm not going to come back if this is a CUP and say, I think this is a great idea, because I still have concerns about it, and I still go back to that financial model. But I'm also sitting here saying, as a CUP, it's something that I think if we can get our hands around, work with the neighbors, work with everyone, that we can possibly make this work for both organizations, and see both of us thrive in the future. So I hope that's something we can do. And I go back again, the last thing, Herschel did not say would, we're not putting a bulldozer. We need those bulldozers to help build our building. We're not trying to shut down that road. He said could, he didn't say would. But we want to protect the safety of our residents, and that is huge, coming around that corner and making sure they're safe, and we've talked about that enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hewitt, I just, Mr. Hewitt, I just have a procedural question. I noticed there's some members of your board here, and I assume that you and Mr. Kelleher have spoke, are speaking on behalf of your board of directors also, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir. All right, thank you. Now, at this point, we were just taking responses from the representations of the entire group. So at this point, the public hearing is closed. Before we start deliberations, I want to remind the commissioners that while we can express general concerns about proffers or lack thereof, we can't make specific suggestions or guidance along those lines. Before we start, Mr. Martin, I thought it was a great overview of the institutional zoning for the city as a whole. I think it might be useful if you could provide some insights, if you have them, on institutional zoning for this particular area. When the flume was developed, why this was...
Sure. As I referenced in my earlier comments, the idea of the institutional ordinance originally came about because institutions such as Lynchburg College, Liberty University, Westminster Canterbury, Presbyterian Home were having to get conditional use permits for just about every little thing that they wanted to do. And up until that time, the way we had dealt with that was, we said, okay, prepare a master plan, think about all the uses you could ever dream of, and put them on this master plan, as long as it's on the master plan, you can move forward. What was really enlightening to all of us is, all of the institutions, I mean, they were well represented throughout the city, were very clear that anything beyond two years for an institution was speculative. They just could not plan that far out because their missions changed, so on and so forth. So at least at the time, Planning Commission and City Council said, from the information provided by the stakeholders, we want to give our institutions flexibility. We support our institutions, they provide important services and missions to the city of Lynchburg, we want to allow them to grow within defined boundaries and continue their missions, as long as they do not create off-site impacts. And the impacts that were discussed was lighting, noise, water and sewer availability, and the big one was traffic. Okay? So, again, the driving factor behind all of this is traffic conditions. Anything that would degrade the level of service at Rivermont and VES Road below the current level of service, which is currently an E, if it dropped to an F, before we would issue any building permits, for them, Westminster Canterbury, anyone that's in this IN-1 zone, they would have to negate that issue. Now, if you think about that logically, fixing that problem's going to be very expensive. So more than likely, that's going to stop the development for a while. But historically, again, if you look at the future land use maps, if you look at the land use patterns, Presbyterian Homes has been in that area since 1903. On the future land use maps that have been adopted by City Council and recommended by Planning Commission, this area has been recommended for institutional uses since at least 1984. That's the only maps that I could lay my hands on. So the city has always intended for this property to be used institutionally, and to remain as an institutional use.
Great, thank you. All right, questions for planning, or for the petitioners, or the opponents?
Tom, you discussed the IN-1 zoning, and according to the flume map, it includes VES, correct?
It does.
Has VES applied for IN-1 zoning, or are they currently R1?
VES has not been in conversations with us about it.
I just noticed they've done many, many CUPS over the last...
They have done many over the years. So, right now, we have two institutional districts in the city. One is Westminster Canterbury, that's the IN-1, and the other is Liberty University, which is IN-2, which is the big, very intense, more commercial uses and those types of things. At some point, if VES came in and wanted to do the IN-1 zoning, I think they would have a very good basis for applying for that, based on the future land use map. Same information, they've been recommended for institutional uses since 1984, they're in established use, they're in an area that's primarily residential or adjacent to residential. They have a campus setting, as long as they meet the standards and mitigate off-site Council adopted this ordinance in order to give them that flexibility to be able to expand. If you remember, one of the things that brought this out was, you know, we heard the argument about the Lynchburg College batting cage, I don't know if you guys remember that or not. You know, they had to get a CUP to do a batting cage. So the idea was, again, to give our institutions the flexibility. Because quite frankly, you know, every time they go through this process, there's quite a bit of time and funds expended in developing these plans.
So, there were people saying, this is just the tip of the iceberg, that they fear that humankind wants to build all kinds of things, and thanks for putting that one up. There doesn't seem to be much more space to put another field, even though to the north, I guess that's oriented to the north of the field, might be enough room for one more field, and I think the topography is about as flat as where the field is. But what, could they, if they were, if they were granted IN-1, could they put in another field with no lights, if they wanted to, without asking anybody?
Yes, but, okay. One, they have to maintain the 20% open space, which, if my math is correct, that's right around nine acres or so, they have to maintain. Then you have the topography issues. Then they would have to do another traffic study and show the impact of that field. And the other thing I'd like to point out, and this was raised during the discussion about the conservation district, they had originally proposed a little bit larger area for rezoning that encompassed the resource conservation area shown in the future land use map. At the request of staff, we asked them to move out of that, to keep that area along the string banks undisturbed. They complied with that, and that was the difference in the 49 and the 47 acres. So they actually got smaller from their original proposal.
Since you mentioned the resource conservation, and I realize this is digressing a little bit, but Dr. Shahidi's point about why not do everything to match up the flume and not pick and choose, if the city's goal is to protect RC...
I mean, they most certainly could have, they didn't, they didn't ask to rezone that to conservation. They didn't ask to zone that to institutional, so we have no reason to believe that it's not going to stay in its current state. What we were looking for was to keep it out of the IN-1, or for some way to make sure that it remained undisturbed.
Tom, is that a brief, the purpose for the IN-1 district? What is the difference between, in this, in the wording, it's designed to help institutions that are looking towards the future, not direct, you know, directly starting projects right away necessarily? What is the difference between that and the conditional use permit and timeframe surrounding the two different scenarios?
Sure. So the conditional use permit process got a little bit better when we adopted the ordinance in 2016, I believe it was. CUPS used to expire within six months, so if it went to council in March, six months from them there, if they hadn't built it, it would expire unless they asked for extensions. Now they expire in three years. So essentially, if they came in and asked for a CUP, if they didn't do anything, it would go away in a 36-month timeframe, where the institutional zoning is permanent, and gives them that flexibility to, within reason, expand, grow their institution as they see fit and their mission evolves.
Nancy, back to your point about the limit, the ability to add more fields and other stuff, I'm curious about the timeframe, when those additions were being discussed, was that prior to the reduction in the acreage request?
Which...
That was a couple of years ago.
So...
Yeah, the original, the original proposal that I'm not sure ever got to Planning Commission was much more involved than what this is.
I'm just trying to get everyone on the same page, there's concerns about doing more. A lot of those concerns would be based upon an original proposal that had a much larger acreage, where those things could have been done by right with IN-1.
And again, I'd be very surprised if they could meet the conditions of a traffic study with that original proposal. Can't say that 100%, but it was much more involved than this.
Tom, can you put up an aerial or a map that shows the entire Presbyterian Home property? I think you had one.
That's almost it, right there.
No. It actually shows that they do have, that top one there showed it, but it's kind of hard to see. But apparently, they do have access to VES Road, it would be very hard to get there, but right there, about where you have your cursor, to the right of that, no, but just below there, the red line goes all the way out to VES Road, right? Probably crossing the creek.
It does, but it would have to cross the creek.
Yep.
Be very, probably...
Well, so does Linden Avenue cross the creek, right?
True.
To get there. So it wouldn't be impossible for them to build a road, although that looks like a horrible place at a curve of VES Road, to put it, put it access. But they do seem to own property all the way up to VES Road at that point. Just something I noticed. Well, while I'm talking, I'll just say that I don't, I don't have big objections to the plan that they have. I mean, I don't mind the fields, I don't mind the fields certainly if they're not lighted. I have questions, well, the first question I have is about the traffic. The, not the traffic on, how do I turn this thing on? Not the traffic on VES Road, but the traffic on their right-of-way through Westminster's property. I didn't see any mention of any kind of traffic calming, although they already have some bumps, speed bumps in the road up on the hill going up to the, where the fields would be. I don't know that they said in their proposal that they would put any more, but if I were, if this were to happen, I would certainly want to see one very close to the Westminster parking lot, where people are going to be creeping out, and I do think they're going to be high school kids going too fast up and down that road. So if you put some traffic calming right at the entrance to the Westminster parking lot, you'd, it would alleviate my fears about that. I think that would slow things down, and I think they're bound to do that. I just haven't seen any, anything saying they will.
Well, the issue with that is, that's not a city street, so I'm not sure that, even if they were willing to put in the traffic calming, that they'd be able to, that's something they'd have to work out with the property owner. I'm not sure how that easement works. Correct? So, I'm sorry.
That's my biggest concern, is that I would like to see that slowed down, and the traffic calming devices that they have now are the little short things that you kind of can swerve around, at least get one wheel off of it if you want to. And I can see people doing that a lot, and if they had them, if they went all the way across the road, that would be even better. But I guess I can't, I'm not asking for a proffer, I can't ask for a proffer, but I sure would feel more at ease if I knew they were going to try to do something like that. Another thing I noticed is that if Westminster Canterbury is worried about playing fields that close to their property, the VES football field is just as close on the other side of them. And I don't know how much of a problem, well, if you look at it on a map, it is, as a crow flies, pretty much the same distance. I mean, I just looked at it a few minutes ago. And yes, it's down in a hollow, this one's up on a hill, so there's that difference. But as far as proximity, I'm talking to the big house, not to the cottages, but from the big house to this field, and the big house to the VES football field, pretty much the same distance. My, my big questions Mr. Day brought up was that they have proffered no lights, and originally he said, I think in January, they said no P A system, only 200 parking spaces, and I can't remember what the third one he said to ask about was, perhaps lighted board, lighted scoreboard. Well, I can't see how a lighted scoreboard's going to hurt too much. If they don't have lights, then all the games are going to be during the day, so I can't see how a lighted scoreboard's going to get in anybody's eyes in the middle of the day. So I wouldn't worry too much about that. But have they not proffered anything about a, a P A system now? They have?
We could call Mr. Francisco, if you'd mind coming up to the lectern, please, because this is in direct reference to that point. We received a letter from you today, at the end of which, I quote, Presbyterian, Presbyterian's homes has stated, already stated that it is not intended to install buzzers, horns, and scoreboards, and then they mentioned netting, but that's not officially showing up anywhere. So I am concerned about the lack of consistency between what you've said, you've said, but what's officially being done.
Well, Mr. Pearl, I, it's not that we're refusing to proffer it. No one has asked us to proffer that. I mean, I didn't know, we're, you're, you're putting an obligation on us to think of everything they can object to and proactively proffer it. What my hope was, was to speak with Mr. Keller, and instead of hearing back from him in a voicemail that they're not going to be sending a letter with objections, that he told me he would, that they were just going to oppose the I N one completely and want to keep us R one. So that was the end of that conversation. I was looking for some input from Westminster Canterbury to say, we need you to proffer no scoreboard, no, no bleachers, no light system, meaning scoreboard lights. We've already proffered no illumination lights. We're not trying to be inconsistent here. We have no intention of saying something to them in a community meeting and coming here and saying we intend to install those things. If this planning commission were to say that, that as a condition of your approval of the I N one, that you would suggest that we proffer those things, I'd be happy to meet with my client for a few minutes and see if we could agree today to proffer those. I'm, I don't have the authority to offer that, but I did not know we were required under the ordinance to proactively proffer everything that was complained about here today. We, we will put our hand on a Bible right now and say under oath that it is our current plan not to construct this project with scoreboards, with air horns, with lacrosse balls flying everywhere. I mean, we will put up netting. If putting up netting is a proffer to get an I N one zoning district permit, I'd be, I mean, I'm a little surprised by that, but we're not refusing to do that. We are more than happy, for instance, if somebody were to come to us and say, you need to put, you need to talk to Westminster and get permission to put a speed bump on the road that's on their property near the Woods Creek parking lot, we'd be happy to do that. But we didn't, we didn't proactively volunteer to proffer that back on January 18th because we didn't know we had to, if you understand what I'm saying. So we have no intention here of being inconsistent or being difficult. I don't know how else to respond to this.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
What I mentioned is in the letter today, but we've had the packet for a little bit longer. So, you know, maybe that's something that, had that happened a little bit earlier, it would have been in there with the lighting.
But we can only act on what we have in front of us.
Right, right.
I'm looking over here at this can of worms. I'm sorry. George is being retired. I have nothing better to do but sit there and read and read and read the two, one of the plus pages that we've had. I'm, I'm reading the, what is it, the easement. And I have spent some, quite a bit of time driving around this area, looking at this. I started before we even got the packet, because I saw it in the public notice in the newspaper, and just trying to get a feel for the area, traffic and stuff like that. And I got to drive down Linden Avenue. People always say it's like a one-lane road. Yeah, you're right. It's like a one-lane road going down there. I was unaware about the other side going next to Westminster because I don't normally go down VES Road. So I was having an exploratory, wonderful Monday afternoon on President's Day. What concerned me on Peaking Place was, you know, this traffic, because I thought that was a one entrance. And I said, man, we're going to have people coming in here for sports events and going down here. Well, first of all, the people go, I get out of the middle of the road there, because the middle of the road is not a place where you're supposed to walk. There's sidewalks on both sides of the road, and y'all ought to use them. Like, I've had to stop twice for walkers walking down the middle of the road. Use the sidewalks. Anyway, going down Linden Avenue, it's like, man, that's a tight squeeze. How do they ever get buses in and out there when I was at Lincoln Junior High? I just dated myself. But, you know, wow, that's a tight squeeze. And so, okay, I drive around there, and it's like, okay, there's that other road there. So, okay, they got this neat road they can get in and out of. And then I get a look at this easement, and, you know, where it said, this is not a court of law. I cannot make a determination, okay? But I can read black and white with yellow highlighting on it. And so, Tom, I'm going to throw this out to you and everything, because it does fall into where I'm leading to there. On page three of the easement, I'll just read it for those that don't have it, says, provided, however, that this grant and convenience is subject to the following reservations, covenants, conditions, and restrictions. And number one is, the easement and right-of-way herein granted is for the benefit of the Presbyterian Home parcel for use in connection with the charitable purpose of the Presbyterian Home and for no other use. Number two says, said easement and right-of-way shall not be used as a public way or thoroughfare and shall not be dedicated to any public use. So I read this, and I'm like, wow. That basically says they can't have an I N one entrance there, because as I read it, that's public use. And I said, wow. I said, wait a second, my wife's a runner. And she is. She's a very good one at that. Unfortunately, I don't, can't run anymore. So I asked my wife, says, honey, when you go there to do the turkey trot, where do you park and how do you get there? Well, we've lived in Lynchburg over 20 years, and she's still trying to find a way around here. You have to graduate from Lynchburg College. And so I said, no, I drive down VES Road, and I take that left right there and go up there and park by the house. I said, oh. So we're already using that as a public ingress and egress to the Presbyterian farm there. So what is it? Is it a public-use road, or is it not? And what concerns me is, if it is not, then we need to go back and look at Linden Avenue for a traffic study. And I can say right now, them walkers got to get off Peaking Place, but I don't see how we're going to get anyone in and out of Linden Place, period. And it would not be able to support an I N one out, I don't see how it would support much of anything else, other than skinny cars and skinny trucks going up and down that road there. And before I can vote, I, personally, I need to have determination. Or if we say yes to I N one, are we saying, are we directing that this is now a public use? Are we empowered to do that? I don't think we are. But what happens? I'll shut up.
You want me to respond?
Yes, sir, if you would. Throw some comments back at me, please.
All right. So you're right, it's not the purpose of the commission or city staff to determine anything about that easement. What I will say is, this is opinion according to Tom, who is just a planner and not an attorney, public use would be if it was dedicated to the city of Lynchburg where everybody could come and go. So that being said, you've got two attorneys who disagree. Co-figure. Right. So, so I think the commission can do one of several things, okay? First, the zoning ordinance, and nobody's going to like this, but that's what the zoning ordinance is. Thirty-five point two dash eleven point eight of the ordinance gives you 100 days before you have to do anything, okay? So based on my meager abilities, that's June 8th, okay? The first, the meeting, your regularly scheduled meeting before that is May 23rd, okay? So really, you've got till May 23rd. That being said, I think the commission can do one of four things. Maybe one of five things. You can approve it on the merit, as staff recommend, recommended. You could, which really hadn't been discussed, is seeking a proffer limiting access on this side of Linden, okay? Staff didn't seek that, because quite frankly, we didn't think it was necessary, but obviously through all this debate, maybe it is. You obviously could deny it. There is a question about access. It's up in the air. Or you could table it until it was worked out. Now whether or not they can get together and work out that easement within 100 days, I'm not sure. They haven't done it in two years, right? So that's, that's really what you have. I also think that there have been some other things suggested that may make the commission more comfortable with the petition if they were willing to proffer it. Things like no bleachers, no sound system, no scoreboard, whatever. You know, maybe they want to consider doing those things. So those are, those are really your options.
Well, it alluded me on sort of the questioning of, of the, of the individuals, and I had a, I don't, I don't have any other questions. I think I understand the issues that are involved very well. Personally, I think with the folks that have devoted the time to be here today and all the attention, I think we should go forth and make a decision. I don't know how the decision's going to turn out, but I'm not for kicking the can down the road. Now, there may be some consequences that evolve between the parties after our decision if we were to make one today, but personally, I'm not in favor of, of delaying a decision and a vote today.
Well, can a petitioner actually add an amendment on their own?
Between now and council?
During, during our meeting, can that be?
They, they could.
Offer that, and we could vote on it, or I don't...
We can't ask for proffer.
Right.
We can't ask for proffer. That's why I'm not...
That's what you're trying to do, problems.
Where we can't.
We could voluntarily offer proffer. It's just a matter of, a matter of...
That's what I was thinking about. I saw that.
Historically, proffers have been offered at the commission meeting.
Yes.
We would be more than happy to offer the following proffers for permanent lighting, for sports lighting, as we did already, for traffic dampening at the Woods Edge entrance. And if you prefer a particular type, we would be more than happy to go across the road as opposed to what we have preferred based on some snow removal, and that's why we did the, the type we did. Permanent sound system, permanent bleachers. We would do all of those, if I've heard you correctly, of what you would prefer for us to proffer. And based on what we've heard today, and having that clarity from our neighbors, we would be more than willing to put that up.
Bob, and it would not be out of order, but on Woods Edge, when you're proffering that you're going to do something on property that belongs to Westminster, that's got to be subject to, you know, their approval. So we can't just proffer that we're going to install something on Woods Edge's property without Westminster's approval. So I'll make that clear.
Bumps are bumps. Right.
Down just beyond that parking lot, doesn't it? And it looked like on the map, you're pretty close to that. You're at the cul-de-sac of those cottages where the, where the property line starts. It's pretty far down.
Can I just make one comment?
Sir, if you would, we're actually not opening it up to the public right now. I, I know that was, he should have gotten permission.
I'm just going to say, I think you're supposed to have two entrances and exits for this type of proffer.
I do think the easement actually gives us responsibility for maintenance, and I think if Westminster is open to it, we would consider this part of maintaining a safe and appropriate thoroughfare.
However, that particular proffer, if it was added, it could be worded with the permission of Westminster Canterbury somehow. That, to me, is a minor thing. But we're waiting here about the, the protocol regarding this, because we've not done this since some of the guidelines have changed.
Well, one, they would have to be in writing.
Yes.
So that would need to start right now. And then, you know, I know we have, but things have...
Right, it changes.
So the proffers, I mean, I'm glad to see that there is, you know, both sides are trying to come to the proffer, but my issue is access to the easement. And Marky brought it up. I did call the city attorney yesterday and had a little conversation with him about, because I had the same questions, because I had, we have two attorneys telling us, well, we have the right to do this, and this other attorney's saying we have the right to do that. And so I was trying to get an independent opinion from him, in which he couldn't give me. But what he did say is that, again, and you already said it, we are not here to decide, and Kenzie, you, it's not your decision to, or for you to say that you agree with Mr. Keller or Mr. Francisco, but what you can say is that there's obviously a dispute between the two parties, and there's obviously a disagreement as to whether or not the easement can be used under the way it's written. So in that, in that regard, I am uncomfortable with agreeing to an I N one zoning based on the, the uncertainty of that easement. And so whether the two parties can come together outside of this in a 100-day timeframe and, and come to an agreement as to how the easement can be used, and would they allow the easement to be used? You know, but, but that's up to them, and I, and I would feel more, feel more comfortable with the two parties having that agreement before I could approve an I N one zoning, because it just, to have access through Linden would not, would not be, and based on our, the last meeting that we had, where, and with the Timber Lake issue, I mean, it just wouldn't, it just wouldn't be an ideal situation.
The only issue I have is... I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead. You want to say something, John?
May I speak?
Yeah, go ahead and then I'll...
Come forward. Again, I don't intend to make a long legal argument. And actually, I don't think it would be beneficial to debate the legal aspects of the easement.
I'm not debating the legal aspects of the easement. I just want to say one thing. It's not that we, that I have a personal disagreement with Mr. Keller about the easement. We have an easement. We have a legal, sitting here today, we have access. We can't say, just because he puts in a letter that they question it all of a sudden, we have legal access. I don't know what we're supposed to do, other than go to them and beg them to agree with us on this, which I'm not optimistic about, by the way, other than to say, we have legal access until we don't have legal access. The only way we wouldn't have legal access is if the Lynchburg Circuit Court agreed with them, if they filed a lawsuit, to attempt to terminate easement. So I don't, it's, it's, I'm making an argument now. It's unfair to condition our I N one on a legal argument that's hypothetical. We can't, I'm not even sure, Dave, that I can go and file a declaratory judgment action in the circuit court to get a court to rule on this, because there's a requirement that the controversy be ripe for adjudication, is the, is the legal term. There is no dispute right now... There is no dispute right now, that I'm aware of, that what we're doing is in violation of the language of the easement. We've been, we've been operating Blue Ridge Autism School on this property for years, and no one has said that that's not an orphanage, and that's inconsistent with the charitable purposes of an orphanage. You've seen my legal argument in the letter, I'm not going to repeat it, but the point is that we have legal access. So, with all due respect, Kenzie, the, the idea that we don't have access, or there's a question about the access, there is no question in our mind that we have access, and there's no question under the law we have access. We have secured it through a deed of easement that says what it says. Now, I understand the difficulty that the, that the commission may have on this, but I think this is a case of throwing something up against the wall to gum this up, and I'm not sure what, what we're supposed to do about this.
I think the other thing to remember, just to, not to say anything about that or not, I mean, essentially, what you're talking about is an incremental use. From where we sit right today, it's an incremental use. It's, it's a public easement now. I mean, to your, to your story, Mark, your wife drove up there and parked on the thing. I've done the same thing. The issue, though, that you bring up, Kenzie, is a little bit different, and that is, in an I-N-one use, does that change the type of traffic that's coming up here? And that's a little bit different question than what we're talking about, because if we currently, based on the traffic study, based on the facts at hand, the traffic is going to be incremental to what they currently have. I, I mean, in all honesty, it's, it's incremental. It's not a question of, you can come, but you can't. But I think you bring up a point of, is there going to be a different type of traffic with an I-N-one use? And I think that's the question to ask. That's the place to go. And, and to step one step farther, just so I can have my peace and be quiet, which I know you all appreciate, in my mind, based on the arguments that you guys have put forward, I think it's, I think the plan is wonderful. I question, I question the zoning. I question if you, if you're, if you're truly landlocked and you're truly, you know, to that thing finished, why is the zoning necessary? Now, that being said, Tom, I see you shaking your head, and you're saying we can't separate the two, but I think that's the issue. We're talking about an I-N-one use, whether that means now semis and, and, you know, trailways, buses, or whatever. That's, that's the traffic issue, and then my second issue is, an I-N-one versus something where you said, well, we've pretty much maxed out, we've got anyway, and, you know, these are the, these are the right things to do with that land.
I, you know, I would, I've, I've spoken with both parties, and I, you know, when I look at the, the way the I-N-one was designed, even through letters, when Westminster Canterbury went through the process, it was acknowledged that, that Presbyterian Home and Humankind was involved in the development of the I-N-one with an, I'm sure, an expressed interest that that was something they might do. In the way of access, there, you know, they actually have land that does a but public road. I do think that they could probably have access other ways, but I also think, you consider that we're talking about a district, a smaller district within a large piece of land, and there's plenty of places that actually use private roads to get into their facility, and people use them as public thoroughfares, but I don't think it is considered a public thoroughfare, and I think the traffic calming devices keep people from doing that. And Linden is tight, and that is not a road I would, I would almost say I'd want a barrier put up on Linden, because even though I drove through the neighborhood and talked to a neighbor, and he's like, this is great what they're doing, you know, and he's trying to move his kids off the road to keep them from getting hit, the traffic's pretty heavy, but, you know, I, when I look at I-N-one, I don't see an access question in there, and I don't know, maybe I'm misreading it. I've been through it and have it highlighted, and I don't know if that's the.
Oh, it's the easement is the question.
Yeah, but the access is my, because we're talking about access as well. I don't know if, if that is something that keeps us from doing I-N-one. There's nothing that says they can't have I-N-one. They could have I-N-one for their own use within something and not have any access to the public, and that would be, certainly within the realm of possibilities in zoning.
In the interest of full disclosure, and I think everybody on the commission knows this, I do live on Linden Avenue. I don't live in the, in the section of Linden Avenue that's affected from Peakland. I live on the other side of Boonsborough Avenue, because Linden goes across Boonsborough Road, but I, I do live on Linden Avenue, but I don't, I don't, I don't think I live in an affected area that would, would prevent me from, from making a vote. You know, I'll just say that, that, and I think somebody said it earlier, this is not about, about the wonderful work that the Presbyterian Home does. They have done tremendous work, whether you call them Presbyterian Home or Humankind, they've done tremendous work and good for the city, and really, they have a statewide impact, and we want to see that continue. When it's time to cast a vote, though, I cannot cast a vote in favor of the petition because of the uncertainties in my mind that surround the issue. I cannot vote in favor of the, of the I-N status because of the uncertainties. I'm not judging how, if this came back at another forum, how I would, would, would necessarily vote. A lot of the proffers that have been made assure me, give me better assurances, but there's just too much uncertainty in my mind about, about the I-N status to vote in favor of the petition.
Can you, what uncertainties are you talking about?
Well, just the uncertainties that involve the easement. I have my own professional attorney opinion as far as what will happen with the easement, but I'm, I'm, I'm not going to voice that, because I don't think it's really within the, the realm of what we should be focused on here today. I think it is, but it is part of the uncertainties. The other uncertainties involve, quite honestly, just the potential for unforeseen consequences that could occur with the Humankind Presbyterian Home having more flexibility in the future. And I, I hate to say it, I'm not a control freak. I don't think, we'd like to see people come through the conditional use permit for the reasons that Tom said earlier, but I would just like to be able to, to maintain a little closer watch on, on how the property develops, and its uncertainties involving that, compounded with the other uncertainties that we've all talked about. And, and that's why I could not vote in favor of the petition today.
Tom, what were you able, able to ascertain from the, your look up?
From all of you?
No, from the, from the, from your proffer investigation.
They, they could definitely proffer it in writing today, yes.
Okay.
I'm with Commissioner Light. As it stands right now, I cannot vote in favor of it, even though I am a, are a supporter of what goes on there at Presbyterian Home. I've had friends from way back when that went through the Presbyterian Home. I've had professional acquaintances I've worked with that were supported thoroughly by the Presbyterian Home in their past, and they spoke to me about how valuable it was in their development as an adult now today. What concerns me are the uncertainties, especially with the easement and with the future development and what the proffers say right now. Yeah, and one of the things that also concerns me is that there's no construction within a hundred feet of the boundary. So, what happens at foot one-hundred-and-one? And so, that, that does concern me. There is ability for them to do something starting at foot one-hundred-and-one. Whether they're going to do that or not, I don't know whether they're going to do it or not, but it does have that uncertainty, and for that, I, I can't.
One, one of our guidelines as planning commissioners is to try and follow the future land use map and the comprehensive plan as much as possible, and when we get these petitions, I often start out looking for reasons why they don't fit the comprehensive plan in the future land use map, looking for exceptions. And I do see this as a good fit for this area, along with VES potentially down the road. This is why this area is, is I-N-one in the flume. I think concessions have been made, and it's much better than, than it was in the past. I do have some concerns about the lack of specific proffers. Whether or not that's enough to sway me completely remains to be seen, but I, in, in general, I, I support what's being done here.
I, I lean more towards supporting it for the same reason as I, I spent a lot of time looking over the land use and the zoning. I feel like it is, it is a fit, and I think that's what it was designed for, and if this is the, the plan that our city is moving forward with, that I would want to follow it, you know, the way it's written. I think that's, I feel like that's what we're supposed to do as planners.
I have a question for you, Tom. Could I-N-one on this site come back and bite us in the future? If the financial, you know, if, if Presbyterian Homes doesn't do well financially, if something happens to that institution, what, could it be rezoned back to residential again someday? Could it?
Absolutely, but what if the I-N-one zone at Westminster, what if something happened to that institution? It's the same concept, really.
R-one, if it was R-one and something happened, and then what opportunity, does that land have to be developed, maybe in ways that, by right, that we don't really like? You know, that this might be a way to actually protect that land in its current form?
I, I am leaning toward being in favor of it, because I don't see that they could do much more than what they say they're going to do. Well, if you can clear up one more thing for me, Tom, they, this is the plan, that they're going to build two fields and swim and pool and whatever, parking lots, and put in some proffers that maybe make me vote for it. And then, in two, two or three years, they don't get it together, they don't do that, but they have I-N-one zoning. Can they do what they want with it, other than putting up lights and bleachers and sound?
As long as it's an approved institutional use, a church, a school, some other nonprofit, if those uses don't trigger the, the traffic conditions that are going to degrade the level of service. You can't forget that. If anything that goes on, on that property or Westminster's property within the I-N-one district degrades that level of service, they either have to improve the roads or they don't do anything. So, it's a chicken or egg, all right? And we all know that road improvements are very expensive, so they're going to weigh expanding, doing something that's going to cause that trigger, or, or not do anything.
The one I would also argue is the lack of space, which has been.
Again, and we've, we've talked about that, there's also a hundred and sixteen acres surrounding it.
Yeah.
You know, if they had come in and asked to rezone the entire hundred and sixty-some acres, I think there's to be some very, very valid concerns, although you still have the traffic study thing. But, I mean, they're, they've limited themselves to a very small footprint with the fields, and also, I, I don't think it's been discussed that much, but also based on the historic design of the Presbyterian Home.
Well, the, the petitioner has offered, on their own accord, some additional proffers. Do we vote on whether or not to allow that to happen, or do, do they amend them and then that becomes what we vote on? What's, what's, would be the next step regarding that?
Yeah, there's not a twenty-one day seminal thing anymore, so if, if, if you'd like to consider additional proffers, and they, they're willing to do that in writing, they can do so.
So, we're allowed to ask for proffers?
You're allowed to suggest things, which I think.
Well, they've already offered them.
Well, they have.
I know, but, so would, would y'all be willing to close Linden access as a proffer?
Would they suggest that we close here today, that we agree to close Linden?
No, I'm just, I'm curious if you would be willing to do that. I mean, that, that would be a, it, it would be, it would help with, my issue is the easement, and if the easement gets taken away, then all of that traffic is going through Linden. So, if you proffered to close the Linden access and not have it anymore, and since you feel like the easement is, is not in question, I don't know. I mean, that, would that help you?
I'm very wary to agree to close Linden if VES is going to be taken away from us, according to what Mr. Keller said. We got to have a way to get into our property. I can't agree to close Linden down forever. I'm sorry.
I, I think the more appropriate suggestion would be to proffer, and I'm not, I don't have the authority to agree to this yet, that if we lose the VES access road pursuant to a court order in any lawsuit that's ever filed by Westminster Canterbury, if we lost that case and a court ordered us to close that access point down, then we would agree that we, that the property would revert to R-one or something like that. We do, we, we are not going to bring buses and things down Linden Avenue. I mean, I've talked to Bob about that. If we did not, if we did not have legal access today on VE, off of VES Road, on our private road, which is still a private road, it's not dedicated to the public, we maintain it, the city of Lynchburg and the state of Virginia does not maintain it, that is our road, if somehow we lost that, then we would agree not to do this. I mean, I, I don't know how else to say it, but as of right now, we have that access, and we should be allowed to, to have an I-N-one zoning district with, with that access.
I think that would be a better scenario than closing Linden, because I, I think Mr. Dogren, who is a former chair of the commission, made this, you never want to just limit yourself to one way in and one way out, okay? And that's not good at all from a emergency services perspective, or if GPS happens to take you that way, what do you want them to do? Turn around and go back out, which doubles it? So.
Worst-case scenario.
Understood. I, I think a better approach would be say, okay, if for some reason that the VES to Linden connection isn't, isn't acceptable or can't be used, they won't develop the, the property, show them the concept plan, they'll just maintain what they're doing now. You, you can't revert the zoning back to R-one, that, that doesn't work.
It's just my concern about uncertainties. If, if we do this, if, as to why I would not vote in favor of it today, it's just part of, of, of the uncertainties involved.
But I, I, I would argue, and that additional proffer, I'm fine either way. The, the proffers that have been suggested would certainly ease my concerns.
At that point, I don't want to cut off discussion about the access, because I keep coming back, Dave, to what, what can we do? What are we supposed to do to have certainty over an access that we have? We're talking about hypothetical situations in the future where somebody could take that from us.
Right, I think, I think that, that's, that point's been made, and I'm actually, I'm fine with, I'm not even concerned about.
I, I don't know how to address Mr. Light and Mr. Johnson's uncertainties.
Well, I think, I think you, I think you have, I think we've covered it, so.
Okay, can I read, if, if I may, the proffer that I've written down on a piece of paper and that Mr. Dendy has signed? "To the Planning Commission dated today, the applicant Presbyterian Homes and Family Services, Inc., hereby amends its application for rezoning its property from R-one to I-N-one as follows. We agree not to install any scoreboards. We agree not to install any sound system or P.A. system. We agree not to install bleachers or stands. Number four, we agree to install traffic dampening device or devices at the appropriate location near the Woods Creek parking lot, either on its property or on Westminster, Westminster Canterbury's property, to the extent that we are required to obtain their permission to do so."
Sir, could any Woods Edge?
I'm sorry, Woods Edge, thank you.
Now, did you also say that if you lost that right-of-way, you would not develop the property?
Well, I wrote it before we had this discussion, so I have not written it down yet.
And, and so, I would like to hear that, because I agree, you can't close Linden Avenue, your, your access to Linden Avenue. You need to, two ways to get in and out, but, but if you would, I would feel more comfortable if I knew that Linden Avenue would never be the primary way in and out of these ball fields. never be the primary way in and out of these ball fields.
I mean, we could simply obligate ourselves to maintain the access easement to VES Road, period. That, that, that this, and I, again, I do not have the authority to offer this right now, but to get to your point, I think the best proffer would be that this zoning permit is conditional upon us maintaining our le, our currently established legal access to VES Road. Again, what would be required for us to do that would be if they filed some kind of lawsuit to get a court order, we would defend it, and if we lost that case, then we're in violation of the zoning permit.
So is that an addition? And again, you still may not be supporting this petition, but just to move forward, the proffers he just read, and then the one he just mentioned?
The, the, the issues were, were attempting to make proffers that would meet your concerns to garner your support of the project.
If you want to work that out, then, and then read that final addition to us.
I see a lawyer wants to talk.
Yes, sir.
Would the applicant proffer build only that, nothing more? Would the applicant proffer build what they showed, what they presented to Westminster Canterbury, nothing more?
No, we won't proffer that. That, that's, I want to address that. That basically is defeating the whole purpose of what we're here to do today, that are we proffering that we will never build anything on our property ever again, other than what's on that drawing dated January 2018? That, that's completely unreasonable and, and not consistent with the ordinance, as Mr. Martin stated.
I, I think that goes beyond the scope of what we're doing here. While they're working on that one additional proffer, I do have a, a clarification from a member of the public. Mr. Davis made mention to an additional document that was filed very late. I just wanted to bring that up.
So what he referenced was, on the city's E-Track system, there showed up another number associated with this. If you understand the way the city's project track system works, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's three parcels. So in order for it to keep track of all the parcels involved in the parent project, there's three projects tied to the one parent. So yes, there's a two, and there's probably another out there, right? Because there's three actual parcels involved. But the parent is where all the information is.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
Can I make a quick point?
At, at this point, I...
You keep talking to the people from Westminster, and you keep talking to the people from Humankind, but you're not giving...
We've been asking clarifications from them.
Well, I want to clarify something real quick.
All right, well, come on, come on up to the front, please.
Look, these guys can argue back and forth about the easement till they're blue in the face, but even if they keep the easement open, it's still going to raise the traffic level on Linden Avenue. There's been no traffic study about anything on Linden Avenue. Everything has been coming off of VES. And I'm having a brain fart, like I had another point to make, but my point is this, like, even if they keep it open, Linden Avenue is still going to have more traffic. And, I mean, there's no way to get around that. They haven't done a traffic study on Linden Avenue. They can, they can, I remember the other point that I was going to say, they can say that they're, they're going to tell everybody to use VES, but if you plug it into a GPS, and I did this before I left the house, if you plug it in 150 Linden Avenue, it's going to give you two options. You can either go VES, or you're going to go the other way. Now, if there's traffic plugging things up at VES, what are they going to do? They're going to come down Linden. And that's just my point.
Thank you. And we do take traffic issues very seriously, as evidenced by our last meeting. And you can come forward whenever you're ready. We've already heard the first set of proffers, so just additional...
Right. I've been authorized to say, in addition, Presbyterian Homes proffers that it will maintain and preserve its current access to VES Road, I need to add, from the private road in, in place, pursuant to the easement dated September 27, 1993. I, I don't know what else we can do. I mean, other than to say, and, and we, we're making this a condition of the permit. If we lose the easement, the permit goes away.
Can I make a suggestion, please?
You, you need to be very careful in that, in that, basically what you're saying is, you'll maintain this easement to VES Road, or you won't build any of this. What you don't want to have happen is to proffer that you'll maintain this easement, because the way that's worded, it could be very well interpreted that if you don't maintain that easement, you can't do anything on your property.
This, this, I understand, absolutely. We would never get in that situation. We would, before we built something, if we were not confident that what we were doing was consistent with the charitable purposes of the organization, which we believe this is, but if we weren't sure of it, we could always file a declaratory judgment action with a court and get the court's permission before we got too far down the road, which would be our obligation to do before we lost our zoning.
My, my point is, you want to be able to maintain what you're doing now, right? So by some wild circumstance, they, it was shut down, you don't want to have a zoning that's saying you can't do anything on the property. You want to be able to maintain your current use.
Haste makes waste. Why don't we take what we've been saying, but they engage us in the dialogue, and we'll try to...
Say that again, just so we know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Haste, haste makes waste. We're trying to do this on the fly. If you table, if you table the petition to go, take no action on it. They engage us in the dialogue, we'll have a conversation, we'll try to get it right, and we'll come back with an agreement.
My stance is, I think that the last proffer muddies the water a little bit. I am most comfortable with making a vote, a recommendation with the addition of these, of the initial proffers that were offered, but not the one with the easement. I think that's just, it brings a lot of grayness into the area about what Mr. Martin was saying.
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with what was presented. Uh, no, no, sorry. We're, we're going to move forward at this point.
One question about this amended proffer, you read off a bunch of stuff.
All right, sir, come forward then, please.
Sorry, but his amended proffer, Randy Davis, resident Westminster Canterbury, his amended proffer that he read, I believe, if I understood correctly, did not specifically mention, again, no lights, and if that amended proffer would totally supersede the original proffer, and if I'm correct, that it did not include the lights, I believe that has to be added back into the amended proffer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's an easy clarification.
It certainly doesn't supersede what we've done earlier. It's an amendment, it's not, it's not to eliminate anything we've done previously.
It would be in addition to the previously established proffer.
Amendment is.
I'll leave it up to you all, if you want to table or move forward with the, and again, I'm not saying we shouldn't have the easement proffer. In my mind, it's not necessary.
Could I ask a question about tabling? If we tabled, do we have, have a public hearing all over, or do we skip the public hearing? We don't.
Would tabling make a difference?
It would for me.
Sorry?
It would for me.
I, I think we need to table it, because I think some lawyers need to hash out a few things, come back with a cleaner proposal for us.
If, if we vote on a table and it fails, then we have to vote yea or nay.
If, if you vote to table it, and the motion to table it fails, it's still on the table, you need to continue to discuss.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table this decision until such town, both parties, from Westminster Canterbury and from Humankind Presbyterian Homes, have worked out all the proffers and disagreements or concerns regarding the, what's going to be constructed, as well as resolving the easement access onto VES Road.
Let's just, let's just vote to table it.
But everyone would do it.
Yeah, and I would, I would humbly suggest you table it to a certain date. Otherwise, if they don't work anything else, it'll die a painful death, and you, you've got to make a recommendation at some point.
So when it, by that date, we meet regardless? Or it comes, it comes before us by that date?
I would suggest two weeks, because there's nothing else on your agenda.
I, I like that.
So, if I could speak for your motion, do you table it for two weeks?
Yes, sir.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Five for it.
Yep.
Yes.
Just a reminder, folks are welcome to stay. We, we still are conducting a public hearing. If you choose not to stay, then please exit quietly. But the, the public, the public hearing is still ongoing. Sorry, not the public hearing, but the meeting. Folks, if I could ask you to leave or stay for the meeting, either way is fine. We still have a meeting going on.
Traffic assessment for Linden Avenue?
Not within two weeks.
Just like to put out, it's still not there.
Is there any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?